Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, sweetie.
Welcome to the work session meeting. This is June, the 24th, at 9:00 a.m., St. Lucy County School Board's workshop meeting. At this time, we're going to open the meeting. I call it to order, and we will all stand for the pledge allegiance and directly after the kids' at hope, treasure hunters pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the receipt of justice for all.
As an adult and treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talents, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children and youth. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions. I love that part, capable. All right. We are now going to go right into our strategic planning. We're going to call Dr. Prince to please lead us in that.
All right. Good morning. This is kind of the end of the year presentation with regards to how the year went last year and also looking forward to next year. I appreciate the board members being here. We have many of our leadership today, and I'm going to call out a few people later today. But one of the reasons that it's important for the leadership of the school district to be there or be here today is because the outcomes are directly, directly result in the work that you do. We always say, you know, superintendents will come and go. They don't raise student achievement. You know, teachers raise student achievement, but the principals, other than the teacher, the principal is the most important person in the building because they set the expectations and they also create the conditions for success. I'm going to talk about that. But also, I'm just like you. And when I say I'm just like you, can you imagine getting up in front of your boss and having to present? And that's how I feel right now because I'm nervous as heck to get in front of my bosses, the collective school board, because they select the superintendent and they can also get rid of the superintendent. So it creates a little bit of anxiety. But I always, when I first got here 10 years ago, this is the first time I ever saw that, the treasure hunter's pledge. And it resonated with me because I'd never seen it before, and it was really the line at the end. Oh, I believe all children are capable of success. I believe that. And, you know, my career has been spent in turnaround. That's, that's how I, how I earned a living. I, you know, was in turnaround schools, DNF schools. That's, that's, those are the places that I spent my entire career. And that was part of my belief system, that usually whenever I got into a D or an F school, it wasn't the kids at the school that were the problem. It was always the adults. And it was always the adults that didn't believe that kids could be successful, even in the schools they were teaching in. And that was always disappointing to me. But I always had to establish that all children are capable of success, and I think our greatest success has come in the areas where we have the most challenges. So I want to start with graduation because 10 years ago, when I started as a deputy superintendent, that was our number one priority. And out of 67 districts, we ranked 49th in graduation rate. And graduation rate, from my predecessor, Mr. Gent, that is the most important metric that you've got to move the needle on. So we really made a point of going into our high schools and what are the expectations for the students, making sure the students could pass the exams, getting the support that they needed. And over time, and it only took about two years, but we moved that into the 90s. In fact, for nine consecutive years, we've had a graduation rate exceeding 90%. And only two other counties in the state can say that, Nassau County and St. John's County. And those counties look very different than us. And when I say they look different, they're just far more affluent. I also like to share, this is the video that we did launch graduation with that I think encapsulates what we're about as a district. By the way, I love this. I did not realize how many people came to our graduations. We had over 41,000 people. And one of the things that we talked about with our graduations is we wanted to make sure that we made some changes so that all of our graduates had a dignified graduation, that they went well, and they looked great, and that the students were really able to shine. And I think that we accomplished that. Even Port St. Lucie, Ms. Tellez, we had a little bit of a rain and wind event. I want to thank our maintenance teams for, for getting us down on the ground where it was a little safer and we were able to pivot. And quite frankly, the students had a great experience.
What do you want to be when you grow up?
When I get older, I want to be a pediatrician.
I want to be a chef.
I would like to be a lawyer.
I want to be a zoologist.
When I grow up, I want to be a veterinarian.
I want to be an accountant when I grow up.
I see myself as a pediatric dentist.
I'm going to mechanical engineer.
For my future career, I aspire to be a robotics engineer.
That simple question sparks big dreams, and today, those dreams take a giant step forward. Welcome to the 2025 St. Lucie Public Schools graduation ceremony. As we celebrate this milestone, I can't help but wonder, what will our graduates become? Will they join our local workforce, pursue higher education through IRSC, the Promise Program, or set off on adventures across the country? Wherever their paths may lead, I believe each graduate is ready because St. Lucie Public Schools has prepared them well for what lies ahead. I'm Dr. John Prince, Superintendent of Schools. Joining me on stage today are five dedicated and compassionate leaders, your elected school board members. Let me introduce them. Our board chair from District 3, Dr. Donna Mills. Our vice chair from District 5, Mr. Troy Ingersoll. From District 1, Ms. Debbie Hawley. From District 2, Ms. Teresa Aronson. And from District 4, Ms. Jennifer Richardson. Each of them plays a vital role in shaping the direction of education in our community. We're grateful for their service and leadership. Every year, St. Lucie Public Schools serves more than 50,000 students with a mission to unlock potential and open doors. This graduating class, over 3,000 strong, is our future. Nearly every graduate crossing the stage today has earned an industry certification, completed college-level coursework, received college credit, or even walked away with an AA degree, all before leaving high school. They've had more opportunities than many of us have ever dreamed of. And yes, I'll say it, I'm proud of what we've accomplished. St. Lucie Public Schools ranks number one on the Treasure Coast in college and career readiness. We're ranked top 10 in the state of Florida out of 67 districts. And for the ninth straight year, we've achieved a graduation rate above 90%, a feat only three districts in the state can claim. Last year, we had our strongest academic performance ever across all core subjects, math, science, reading, and social studies. And every single one of our schools is rated an A, B, or C. No Ds, no Fs. In short, we are crushing it. I believe public education is the genius of our democracy. Our mission is simple yet powerful. Make school the best part of every child's day. Help students dream and then achieve those dreams because growing up, it starts today. I'm Dr. John Prince, proud superintendent of St. Lucie Public Schools. On behalf of our board members, congratulations to the class of 2025. May your journey be bold, meaningful, and filled with purpose. So to our graduates, I ask you again, what do you want to be when you grow up?
I plan on attending college.
Going to University of Florida, majoring in civil engineering.
Attending University of Miami, majoring in marine biology.
I'll be attending Florida State University and majoring in electronic engineering.
Attending San Francisco University and studying business administration.
To pursue a bachelor's degree in political science, and then I plan on going to law school after.
I plan to go to med school and open my own practice as a dermatologist.
Florida International University on a political science and international relations track, studying at Indian River State College for nursing.
Taking up a trade in either plumbing or AC finish.
Only working on oil rig after high school.
To the University of South Florida, and I am majoring in public relations and advertising.
I'll be joining the U.S. Army, support and logistics.
I'm graduating with my AA in criminal justice.
Committed to play volleyball at Palm州State College.
I'm planning to do my professional business.
Pursue my bachelor's focused on electrical engineering with renewable energy.
I'm enlisted in the United States Air Force for the pararescue program.
I plan on running for Florida FFA State Office.
And Florida State University on a pre-med track.
I'll be moving to New York to RIT to pursue musical performance.
I want to go to Stetson University, study languages and linguistics, and minoring in education.
In elementary education and back to St. Lucie Schools to teach first grade.
I'll be in the United States Army as a combat medic.
With my mechanical engineering degree or electrical engineering degree, I'd like to work for Lockheed Martin.
University of North Georgia to play on their women's soccer team, majoring in kinesiology.
Hope to dedicate my hands to serving my community as a pediatric surgeon, hopefully within St. Lucie County.
So, you know, I'm going to go through the success of the year, but I think that video encapsulates what, encapsulates what we're all about, which is student success and, and trying to make sure students achieve their dreams. And we know that some students are going to be college-bound and some students are going to be workforce development-bound, maybe they're military-bound. But the bottom line is, we've got so many families like mine, when I was growing up, where my mom and dad worked and they worked multiple jobs. And they never came to an event that I had, they never were involved in my academics, they never looked at a course request sheet to see what I was taking. And it's not because they didn't love me, it's because they were just unable to because they worked. And I was one of seven. And the bottom line is, we have those families out there, and we need to make sure as a school system, that if their parents are unable to advocate for them, that they have people in the schools that will. And I think that that is what the people in the audience today are all about, and they recognize that as well. So, starting at the top of the organizational chart is the school board. You hire the superintendent to be the chief executive officer, and it's been a family affair for me. My wife has been a teacher here for 10 years. In fact, my daughter just switched careers and finished her first year of teaching math at Oakhamic. And my daughter just finished her sophomore year at St. Lucie West Centennial High. But I wanted to point out my, my cheese. Deputy Superintendent Dr. Wild has just done a marvelous job of all of the departments that report to her, and she's been a true confidant in the sense that she does everything that I don't want to do. She serves the purpose that I did for Mr. Gent, whatever conversation that I, also, she also is in charge of knowing a lot of the details. And sometimes the superintendent has the big picture knowledge, and she has that granular understanding, and she can meet with people and kind of explain in more detail the things that I can't. I, I'm really proud of Dr. Summer. He came into a difficult situation a couple of years ago when our former chief of schools, Dan Frank, passed away unexpectedly. I can't tell you how masterful Dr. Summer has been with the systems he has set up and the collaboration between the school side and the district side. I always say that Ms. Martin is the best chief of communications in the state, and the messaging that we have and the celebration that we have of our success, Ms. Martin has just done an amazing job for me. Michelle Thomas, I'm going to share a little bit of detail on the financial side with the, the focus on employees and providing for our employees. And because of Michelle's brilliance in the financial department, we're able to utilize our resources in sensible ways so that we can take care of our employees. And then I call Mr. O'Leary 7-Eleven because he's open 24/7. And Mr. O'Leary, anytime something bad happens, he's the one that calls me that the water line broke at 3:00 a.m. and what we're going to have to do about it and how long it's going to take. And also, he's a direct conduit to our schools as well when crisis happens. I also want to thank Mr. O'Leary too, with crisis management. Mr. O'Leary is my point person for hurricanes, tornadoes, all the things that impact the school district, we'll talk about in just a minute. Also wanted to add the rest of the members of my executive team. Dr. Perry is a true confidant for me, also works a lot with the fine arts and puts together our graduation. It just went brilliantly this year. Dr. Ocampo, just imagine, our students have 260,000 assessments annually that go through his office. And he just does an amazing job in assessment and communicating with our schools so that all of that is seamless. Rod Natta, unsung hero. He's one of the most respected federal programs people in the state, does all of our Title One work and our special grants. Dr. Sanchez is sick, could not be here today, but Dr. Sanchez joined our team eight years ago, and he's turned human resources into one of our most underperforming departments, into one of our highest performing departments, with one of the highest retention rates in the state of Florida. Dr. Roland, who handles our student services and also exceptional education. We've had a number of tragic situations that we've had this year where her department and her teams have been deployed to support not just our, our students, but our teachers as well in times of need. And Denise Rodriguez, can't say enough about Denise with the work she's done in professional development. But a lot of the success we've had this year has been the seamless work between our school centers and our professional development and the supports we're providing our schools in real time that help our students get over the top. The four horsemen, not of the apocalypse, but of our school centers, Mona Ray Miller-Buchanan, Darrell Conymas, Latricia, and Diane Lienbach are our school supervisors, and they work to support their schools. And I can't tell the principals how much they advocate for you to the point that I get angry at them. Because they do care about you and they want what is best for your schools. And we always talk about, we have to look out for the system and sometimes not for your school, but all of you want additional resources and supports, and we, economics lead what we can do. And we can't provide support to everybody, we have to make economic decisions. And sometimes you get your executive directors that will debate on who's going to get what, and it's quite entertaining when it's not. Our general counsel, Barbara Satica, I appreciate her legal advice. She keeps us out of trouble. And then Director of Safety and Security, Troy Church. Troy, I don't think you realize, has to answer thousands and thousands of individual safety questions on the safety assessments that go out every year, has to make sure that over 27,000 doors are locked every single day. And he is our point person with safety and security. And when something goes wrong in our community or our neighborhood, like they happened, you know, months ago with a bus situation, Troy and his team are out there to support law enforcement and also work hand-in-hand with law enforcement to support our schools. But really, this is a love letter today to the principals. Our principals are truly, truly excellence in education. They do a wonderful job, they're compassionate leaders, and I can't thank our principals enough for, for the year that we had. And I'm going to share with you how important this year was because of the success we had is really, could not be possible without the leadership of our principals. So, I always talk to principals and my message, spoiler alert, on the 24th, is about what are you about? That's a question I always ask our principals, what are they about? And I want to talk a little bit about, you know, what I'm about and my core values. My core value, number one, is to serve the board's interests. You know, I have a number of conversations with you. I don't share my conversations that I have individually with board members, but I listen, I do listen, and I try to make sure that your interests are served through what we do on a daily basis and what your priorities are as a board. It's very difficult because there are five of you, and, you know, one of you may have an interest that another one doesn't, and it's, it's trying to gauge those and, and work for the betterment to serve the board. The second is all children are capable of success. I live that each and every day, and I truly, truly believe that. And I think that our outcomes demonstrate that belief. Next is higher excellence. The most important job I will do as superintendent is hire. It's my responsibility to, you know, if I'm going to cook dinner, pick the, you know, pick the ingredients. The principals that we've hired are outstanding. The cabinet that supports the principals are outstanding. But not just that, I have to expect excellence. Nobody rises to low expectations. You know, we have to have a standard, and the standard is excellence. And that is my expectation for everybody that works with me. Next is lead fearlessly. I can't do my job if I'm, if I'm acting afraid. I have to do my job to be in the best interest of the board and in the best interest of serving kids. And I'm committed to that, and I cannot be afraid to make decisions because I'm afraid of something. And I won't, I simply won't. I have to do what's best for kids. Deploy resources responsibly. That's so critically important in some of the things we're doing in the future. We have to make sure that our resources are deployed responsibly. And not just responsibly, that resources are deployed in what is in the best interest of children. I talk to the principals about this all the time. Create the conditions for success. In the end of the year meeting we had with principals, you know, not every school achieved the success that they wanted. That's okay. Sometimes you don't meet your goals or you don't meet your expectations. You can't control if you've got three fourth-grade teachers that are pregnant and on leave. I'm just, I'm just saying, those things happen, and you, you know, you have an up and down, up and down year. But you will see over time, successful people, successful leaders achieve successfully over time. It's called trend data, and I'm very, very interested in trend data. That's what I look at is, are we successful? What, you know, are we ascending? Are we flatlining? Or are we going down over time? Serve the public good. This is really important to me because I do believe that public schools are the genius of our democracy. In a time where parents have choice, and I, and I want to really emphasize this, parents can send their kids anywhere. They can keep them at home, they can send them to charter schools, and they now can take dollars and get a check and go to a private school. We have to evolve. We have to evolve or we will die a slow death in public schools. We have to evolve. And serving the public good is making sure our public schools are the number one option for our families. Manage crisis. We take this for granted, but crisis management is a very important part of what we do. We're getting into hurricane season, and I'm going to talk a little bit about crisis management in just a minute. Hurricane Milton, I think this brought out the best of us. Truly tragic event that we provided emergency, emergency shelters in two of our schools at Treasure Coast and at Fort Pierce Westwood. However, we did have an EF3 tornado hit, and actually, it impacted some of our principals. Some of our principals had their homes either destroyed or severely damaged. In fact, Mr. Gardner had the shelter in his home, and literally right after that tornado went through with multiple fatalities, he had to be police escorted to open Fort Pierce Central High so that the folks that were displaced and had their, their homes destroyed and were traumatized could be taken to Central. And I cannot thank Eldrick enough for his leadership. And also, I visited that, that school shortly after and saw for myself the, the trauma that those people had, that we had to provide mental, mental health care for as well, that they were severely traumatized. And people don't realize the operational support that is involved with this from a child nutrition services, making sure those people are fed, making sure they're transported with buses, facilities, making sure they have air conditioning. I am going to mention Mr. Alfonso. If you see a tornado, don't go towards the tornado, go into Westwood, and also that mental health support. So, construction investment. We're going to talk about the reinvestment of public education and our commitment. One thing that struck me when I got to this district and was privy to the executive sessions, the board talked about all means all. And that, that, you know, all areas of the county deserve first-class opportunities, and we're in this together. And that really struck me, especially from dealing, and I'm not being critical of other boards, I'm just simply saying, not all boards have that philosophy. Sometimes it's me, me, what's best for me, what's best for me, what's best for me. With our board, it's about what's best for us. So our reinvestment, first, our growth projects. These projects are on the docket over the next five to eight years. Legacy High, congratulations to Mr. Smith. That school is on time, on budget, on schedule. It's going to open up here in a few months. And Western Grove, that school, congratulations. Where's Latonya? Latonya, congratulations again, is going to be opening up in August 2026. Latonya, I always take my walks right next to that school, and things are moving along. There's a lot, a lot of earth being moved right now. Southern Grove, the planning process is going to start March 26 with an open in August of 29. And then Wilder, that's not the name of the school, it's the development that the school is in. That will literally look to open in about eight years. So our growth, we know that we have to keep up with growth. And as part of growth, whenever you have growth, to offset some of the cost of building these schools, we use what are called impact fees. And impact fees can only be used on new development, whenever you're building schools for growth. However, we have to reinvest and revitalize schools and areas because we need to make sure, in a competitive environment, that we're keeping up with charter schools and also private schools that can build in our area, and we need to be the first option, not the second, third, fourth, or fifth option for our families. So, the number one thing we did was rebuild Fort Pierce Westwood. We made a $100 million investment in the Fort Pierce community so that those students have a first-class building, first-class educational experience in high school that will launch them into the workforce or launch them into college. CA Moore. Currently, we're spending millions of dollars to refurbish that school in addition to adding a gym. That school is going to be a K-8. Also, there's an advantage with the K-8s, especially in some of our communities where younger siblings are being taken care of by older siblings. So the K-8 model, we find, is very, it's, it's something unique to St. Lucie Public Schools, and a lot of our families like that option because they can keep their kids together. Palm Point, K-8, that is the only K-8 with the exception of CA Moore. CA Moore will get a gym first. Once that gym is completed, we will make sure that Palm Point has a gym. As you call, we took over Palm Point from FAU, which was a huge boon for the district in the sense that it added another school in that area that we could send students to, that we weren't busing students all the way from, you know, we're just busing students all over the place to get them, to get them to Palm Point. Over time, that will be a zone school. Proposed K-8, I'm going to talk about that in a minute. Village Green, that will end up being a K-8, and we're looking at August 2029 to have that completed. And then Legacy in Fort Pierce Westwood, by January of 2031, if the growth continues, we will need to add academic wings onto those schools just to keep up with the growth. Now, if things go right, we may be able to add an academic wing to those schools and actually save the taxpayers money by holding off on building Wilder High if, if we think we can just add an academic wing, and it would save the district a significant amount of money. I am going to say, a proposed K-8. I went out and spoke to some faculties in the, in the community about an initiative that we were going to propose to the board, and we are not yet ready to submit it to the board until July 29. And that would look at a proposal of building a new K-8 in the heart of, of Fort Pierce, revitalizing and creating a number-one destination school and combining multiple schools into that school. It would save the taxpayers money with regards to the amount of money and power it takes to operate multiple schools. But more importantly, those students deserve a first-class educational opportunity in the heart of Fort Pierce. And the only way we can make that happen is to be creative. We have to be creative, and we've got to look forward, and we've got to look at what the future of St. Lucie Public Schools is going to look like. And like I said, that will be And like I said, that will be proposed as part of the July 29th workshop at 3:00 PM. Effective resource deployment. The budget just came out. We will be having an executive session soon with the board to talk about what the budget looks like with regards to raises. However, we have done a good job and I want to commend Michelle Thomas one more time. You know, over the last two years, we've been able to provide our employees significant raises. It is a tighter budget year this year, but I'm just proud of the fact that overall, all of our groups have gotten a little over 10%. And that's been, I really attribute Michelle and the work she does in her, in our budget department and I commend our, our union partners as well for working with us to get opportunities for our employees to get higher pay raises. Customer service. I wanted to do a couple of shout outs here. So I've been the superintendent, this is my third year. This, these surveys are completed by our principals and it's really important. They're anonymous surveys. And you can see over time, we've had, we've never had better survey results and that's going back as far back as 10 years. Our average this year is about a 4.62. Five is the highest you can go. I did want to give a couple of shout outs to Amber Monarchik, Alternative Education. By the way, when you're dealing with principals and staff about alternative education, it is, you're dealing with very unhappy people. I'm just throwing it out there. And the fact that Amber is able to work with our school staffs and our families and, and what are difficult circumstances for children and to really have such an effective survey result, I wanted to give her a shout out. Amber, you there? Stand up Amber. Good job. Congratulations. Because that's not easy. And I know she's not here today, but Heather Belith though. Heather came into elementary curriculum, elementary education and I have regular breakfast with the principals. And what was really interesting to me is the principals would say that Heather would just cold call them and check on them and say, how are you doing? Is there, what can we do to support you? And that's really what we want from our teams is just a what can we do for you? And it's reflective of her survey results. Went from one of the lower to, to the strongest in the district and, and they're all strong. They're all wonderful. And I, and I did want to mention a few people before I move on because we're about to get to our content. But Elementary Works for Talent Development, Denise, that's Denise. I'm one, I'm going to ask if they're here, ask them to stand. Liz, Heather, DeeDee, Lisa Slover, if you're here, stand up. They're in our talent development, professional development. They do an amazing job. I can't tell you how important your work has been. As we get into the results for the board, it's a direct results, not only of the principals, but the work and the support you provide in your departments to our teachers and you are not seen, but you're unseen, but your work is seen. So thank you very much and I do appreciate you. Okay? Good job. Now, I know Michelle Gillard is not, Dr. Gillard isn't here today, but a lot of the mental health support services, she's directly responsible for that. And I just wanted to give her a public thank you. And Alicia Seitz and Rod, where are you? Alicia, are you guys here? That's okay, Rod, you stand up. So, so wanted to point out with Rod, workforce development. That falls under Rod's purview and Rod's leadership and one of the goals that I'm going to propose for next year has been critically important. Rod's been very involved with workforce development, has traveled with me to see some other districts and what they do. And, you know, we're proposing to take the next step in our workforce development and Rod has been really instrumental in that. So thank you, Rod. And I did say, so Craig Jerome, who used to direct these shows retired and we have a new, a new media service manager that you may know, and I want to introduce him now if he'll come back from behind the, the glass curtain, Doug Simpson. Where's Doug? Dougie. So Doug, I told Doug, it's his job to make me look thin whenever we're shooting. So thank you, Doug. Congratulations, Doug. Doug, Doug has earned it. I've, Doug's worked here for a number of years and also I've got a great relationship with Doug because a lot of special projects, when we do these videos, he works very, very closely. And actually whatever I have in my head, he's able to make it even seem better. But lastly, I wanted to get to, and then we're going to move forward, but Deb Wees, Deb, stand up. Deb, 35,000 meals a day. Freshly cooked meals a day. Matt, where's Matt? Matt Weber? Is Matt here? Matt, stand up, come on, so they know who you are. Matt, if, if any of our schools don't come out on time, on time, on budget, thank you, Matt, you got it, then, then we can look to Matt and say, let's make it happen, Matt. And then I wanted to get to ITS. Nile, is Nile here? Nile, ITS. So there's been a game changer in ITS where ITS has worked with us to create something that our principals can look at as a, as a data set that has been a game changer for us. We call it the percentage of years growth and we take assessments and we look at assessments and their averages and we can look by school, by teacher and see exactly what students, what teachers need our support. ITS has been critically involved in that work along with assessment and along with Dr. Summer and, and also teaching and learning, but this has been a game changer. If you talk to our principals about, okay, how did we pull this off? It's, it's really that information that they were able to use, that we really had it done at the semester and they were able to pivot on some certain things and we had tremendous growth. Eric, there's Eric back there. Now Eric is my, he does a little bit of everything, but I just wanted to recognize Eric because he works very closely with me and I appreciate all the support you do, Eric, because if some of these productions that we do, if these people, if they mess up, it could be a disaster. So we've got a big kickoff teacher event on August 4th and all the folks that I just talked about will have a major role in that. And lastly, I wanted to hit Bob Massa. Where's Bob? Bob, he, dude, most, most organizations don't have their own code enforcer. Bob has so many certifications, okay, that he is so unique in what he does. It actually saves the taxpayers a lot of money because we're able to kind of cut out the middleman and Bob does a lot of that. And the last person, and I think one of probably the most important people as part of my team is Jacunti Ephrem. Jacunti, where's Jacunti? Jacunti's awesome. So I want to talk about Jacunti for just a minute and I'm going to embarrass him. I'm not, I'm really not. Transportation, when I first got here, nobody wanted transportation. When I say nobody wanted it, nobody wanted to take responsibility for it. And Mr. Gent was trying to determine who was going to take transportation because we talked about your survey results. Transportation was one of the most complained about departments from, from parents to principals. Jacunti took over that department and has made it one of the most effective departments that we have and directly communicates with principals. If there are late buses, if there's issues, he meets with principals regularly. He has transformed that department and I can't thank him enough because transportation has become a true professional organization where we have professional development for our bus drivers. We work with our bus, bus drivers on management of student conduct. I mean, he has turned that into a real professional organization. So Jacunti, kudos to you. Wonderful job. So we started out last year with four goals. One was the biggest thing is the renewal of the half penny sales tax. Absolutely huge. That brings in about $25 million a year to the district for capital projects. Okay? That's when we talk about reimagining and rejuvenating schools, that is the money that pays for the air conditioners, for the roofs, you name it, that money goes to capital projects. The second was the core. Each of you have talked to me about improving reading, math, improving proficiency. That has been an expectation. The district has lagged behind the state significantly in proficiency. So I, I, I hear you loud and clear. We've put a lot of resources into moving student proficiency. But also with that is what I believe in, is increasing acceleration opportunities. All children capable of success. If a kid has demonstrated they are talented, they should be able to move through our system at that rate. They should be accelerated and provided those opportunities. And the outcomes that we had this year, which I will report to the principals on July 24th, those students blew it out of the water. The students that we accelerated, they thrived and they performed magnificently. That was not a risk, it was an expectation. Lastly, is making sure that Legacy opened up on time and I'm glad to say that we haven't had a lot of calls. We had the right of students to remain at their schools if they could provide transportation, but Legacy is on time, on schedule and those boundaries were set. So we had 67% voter approval for the half penny, which was huge, wasn't even close. The board approved our zones on October 22nd and I'm going to get to acceleration in just a moment and also our scores. So metrics that impact student achievement. I will talk to principals all the time about this. You know, a few years ago, we had a focus on attendance. I want to let the board know that that, that has been unwavering. I'll know it's, it's not an official goal. That has been a priority is making sure we don't drop the ball because we know if kids come to school, they're going to perform. So we've been relentless on our attendance and some of our schools, and I'll, I'll throw, Forest Grove has been an outlier. They have been relentless with regards to attendance. Where's Ms. Bobo? Ms. Bobo has actually shared out with other principals what they're doing, even coming in on Saturdays, meeting with families, but, but just has, she has turned that school around and I just can't tell you enough about her leadership. Acceleration scheduling. Putting students in the right classes where they can be successful and also moving them at a faster pace if they can do the work. And it's not just if, the expectation is they can do the work because the biggest challenge we have with acceleration is not whether the kids can, can be successful, it's the parents. The parents will come to us and say, no, they can't do it. And what we find is, can you just give us the nine weeks? Can you give us a little time and we'll, we'll move them out if they can't do it? And we find that, yeah, they can do it and it builds their confidence and it's huge. So our attendance actually improved. That's 800 more students coming to school, just one percentage point is 800 more students coming to school every day. Now, if I look at that metric, I'm going to predict we're going to have a better year than we had last year because if more kids are coming to school, then our achievement will follow. The next is our accelerated enrollment. Now you look back in 2014, 15, that is the first year I came as a deputy superintendent. We only had about 2,600 students enrolled in accelerated classes. When I took over as superintendent, we had 5,415. This has been a philosophy and I want to give Dr. Summer credit for really implementing this vision of acceleration into our school district and meeting with the principals, looking at their scheduling, identifying the students that can do it. And in just a couple of years, we've gone from 5,415 to 8,833 students taking part in acceleration class and most of those students are in elementary school. Why is this important? It's because if you're an elementary student and you're taking accelerated coursework, when you get to middle school, you start taking high school coursework. When you get to high school, you start taking college coursework. And what it's done is it's transformed, especially for our black and Hispanic students, it's creating first generation college students. And we're having tremendous success with it and we'll have even more students enrolling in it this year and we'll be adding schools. The challenge, we couldn't have every school implement AMP because they didn't have enough students to create a whole section, but we're building that and we should be able to add more schools this year. Second is expecting excellence. So I'm really excited about this. This is our performance in reading. I promise you, in this drink, there's only Diet Coke. And this is really attributable to our principals and the people that support our teachers and our teachers in our classrooms. And I don't want to just mention the teachers in the classrooms because research suggests that if you just have one meaningful relationship with an adult in a school, you will be a more successful student. And there have been plenty of kids we've talked to that it's not the teacher, it's not a principal or guidance counselor, it's an office clerk, it's somebody in food service, it's somebody that checks in on that child. And I can't tell you enough of how caring the people in our schools are, not just in our schools, our bus drivers. I talked to a kid when we were doing interviews, his, his favorite person in our school district was his bus driver. Loves the bus driver. Bus driver checks on him, makes sure he's doing okay, asks to see his report card. I mean, that's what you want from your organization and it's made a huge difference. This is, if you orient, on the left is our performance, on the right is the state's performance. The state improved in every grade level. However, the school district actually outperformed the state in almost every single grade, plus four in third, plus seven in fourth. Fifth grade, I'm going to address that briefly. Those fifth graders were COVID students. In other words, when we had COVID, those students were sent home the last nine weeks. And if you also recall, when we came back in first grade, more than half of our students started first grade where they learned how to read at home. And these are the smallest, most fragile kids. So quite frankly, I expected us not to do as well as we did, but we did worse than the state. But if you look at sixth grade, plus 11, this is proficiency, 49 to 60%, plus 11 in seventh grade, 43 to 54%, eighth grade, plus five, ninth grade, plus three, and 10th grade, plus four. Just an unbelievable job compared to the state. And what you're seeing is St. Lucy Public Schools, for the first time in some metrics, actually had higher proficiencies than the state, not necessarily in reading, but in other metrics, but we've closed the gap, we're right there with the state. Had huge increases. And if we do a side by side, this is last year, this is what we look like. So last year, over those three through 10 grades, we were plus 24. The state was plus 21. So, you know, and I always use these as a scorecard because it kind of oversimplifies things, but we did slightly marginally better than the state did last year in reading over all grades. But if you look at us this year, 25, we were plus 43. The state was plus 30. So we did significantly, in fact, we did a third, a third better than the state did overall. Now let's take a look at math. I will say math has been a priority for us. We have struggled in math specifically at the high school level and we did change some things with how we did our professional development with math. Previously, we were reluctant to pull teachers out of the building to do professional development with our math teachers because, you know, principals want teachers in front of their kids. And I know it, it was a conversation we had to have with principals. The only way we're going to get better is we've got to work with our teachers so our planning and implementation of the lessons is more effective and aligned to the standards. So once a month, we were pulling our elementary teachers particularly out of our schools and we also were sending out folks from professional development into our high schools to try to support our high schools as well. So in math, we saw some really huge gains. Once again, fifth grade was our kryptonite, but we did significantly better than the state in math in grades three through eight. And if we take a look at algebra and geometry, we increased, and by the way, in algebra and geometry at the high school level, almost all of the students taking algebra and geometry are lower level students because the higher level students are taking algebra and geometry in middle school. So we actually, it paid off. We had a plus five and a plus seven and the state was pretty flat. So if we look at this side by side, we were plus nine last year, this is last year. The state was plus one. was plus 1. This year, we were plus 35, I can't tell you how crazy that is. And the state was plus 17, almost a 2 to 1 ratio between how our students perform versus the state. And then if we look at algebra and geometry, last year, we were down by 2, the state was down by 1. This year, we were up by 12, and the state was flat. So, I mean, this, you know, I have been doing this for 34 years. I have never seen the year we had in reading and math in my entire career. This is really, really good stuff. Science, but wait, there's more. So, fifth grade, eighth grade, and biology. On the left is St. Lucy Public Schools, and on the right is the state of Florida. So we were a little less than the state. Once again, that's that fifth grade group, plus 5 though in eighth grade, and then plus 7 in biology. And I'd also like you to note, in eighth grade and biology, we were identical to the state in proficiency. That's never happened. I'm just saying that we're right at where the state is in proficiency in eighth grade science, and 10th and 11th, or 9th and 10th grade biology. So side by side, we were plus 12 last year, and the state was plus 7. Like I said, we had a really good year last year. This year, we were plus 11, and the state was plus 10. And now we get to the last core, which is U.S. history, and civics. So we were plus 8, the state was plus 4, and then we were plus 4 in U.S. history, and the state was plus 3. And if I look at a side by side of last year in social studies, we were plus 4, and the state was plus 6. And this year, we were plus 12, the state was plus 7. So, what does this all mean? If I look at the scorecard, and we kind of create this, and I do this for the principals, because it's an easy way to say, okay, did we have a good year or a bad year? If your scorecard is flat, which means you're the same as the state, you've had a middle year, it's a wash. You're not going anywhere. You're just, you're a hamster in a wheel. And if it's the same, what you want is to outperform the state. Because that means you're closing the gap. So, this is our scorecard. For reading, plus 43, plus 46 to 17 in math, plus 11 to plus 10 in science, and then plus 12 to plus 7, and this is what it looks like, plus 1, 12 to plus 63. That's incredible. That's a 2 to 1 ratio. Whenever I saw this, I could already predict what, how we were going to do on our district and school grades. This is last year. And I'd also like to remind you, last year was the most successful year we ever had on standardized tests. That was last year. And this is this year. So it's not even close. I mean, we have really, really performed well. And once again, that goes back to the relationship between our principals and the teachers, the implementation of the standards, the instruction level that's happening in our schools, and also the supports that are there for our teachers and our students. And last year to this year, I was, I was so excited last year with this result, with the result we had last year, and when I looked at this year's results, it was, I will be honest, I had a hard time believing it. I had a hard time believing it. In fact, I had many conversations with Dr. Summer on weekends, as scores were coming in, we were seeing them in real time, and I just was waiting for the other shoe to drop, like there's something, you know, could we be wrong? So, increases in the core, and I think this is really, in a nutshell, one of the biggest priorities of the board. You know, are we moving student achievement? And the answer is yes. In third grade, we improved by 4%. In reading, we improved by 5%. And this is all students, all students. Math, we improved by 7%. Science, we improved by 3%. And then social studies, we improved by 5. Now if I were to stack this over the last two years, though. Reading, we've improved by 9% in two years. That is truly significant. If you're moving reading 2 to 3% a year, you are doing something special. We've improved it by 9. Math is unbelievable. That has improved by 12%. Science, 8%. And then social studies, 10%. So, you know, all I can say, you know, the board's commitment in your conversations with me have been about focusing on the core, focus on the core instruction, focusing on proficiency. And we have done that, and I cannot tell you how proud I am of the teachers in our classrooms, and the folks that are behind me, with implementing our plan, and then actually achieving the results, which quite frankly, I would not think we would do this well over a two-year period. That's from a historical perspective. It's not been my experience. Middle school, these three metrics, I didn't do a two-year stack, but we're already top 10 or 15 in the state, but we still improved. Middle school acceleration improved by 3%, and that's students that are passing an algebra or geometry test. So 81% of the students that took the algebra or geometry exam in middle school passed it. College and career acceleration, that is the percent of seniors that graduated that have an industry certification, okay, passed an industry certification exam, passed an AP, ACE, or IB exam, or earned an ABC, or C in a dual enrollment course. And graduation rate, from 92 to 94%, it's, we continue to just, our high schools are real machines, with making sure that our students are relentlessly supported. So, opportunities. Why do I think we haven't reached our ceiling? I had a conversation with Dr. Mills yesterday, and I said that we're not there yet. We're going to accomplish something we've never done this year, but we're not where we can be, where I believe we can be a top 10 or 15 district in the state of Florida. And it's this. This is our improvement in proficiency in one year, in ELA, math, algebra, geometry, science, and social studies. We're starting off this coming year way ahead of where we were last year. So we are literally going into '25, '26, where students have never performed better, and we have systems in place. Now remember, I said some of the things we did happened at the semester. We are able to start them on day one with some of the supports, and also the tools that we have in our toolbox now, to start from day one and not make changes at the semester. We'll still make changes at the semester, we always do. But we're ready to take the next step. And what I mean by that is this year's success is not a one-off. We're at the point of being a sustaining organization of sustainable excellence, where we've got the people in place, we've got everybody moving in the right direction, and that's what successful organizations do, especially when they taste success. And that fifth grade group, we're going to keep an eye on, because we have to continue to provide those students additional support, because those are the students that really missed out on their first year of where you learn how to read, which is in first grade. So we have to keep our eye on those students and try to support them. All right. I want to get into our school grade predictions. Remember, these are predictions. No pressure, Terrence. The reason I say to Terrence is because there's a lot of math that goes on behind the scenes, and a lot of very smart people that are doing a lot of, they're turning a lot of levers with computers. So, we anticipate that these predictions are going to be really, really close. Last year, we were almost right on with every one of our predictions, with the exception, I think, of one school. So how are school grades calculated? What they do is they look at students. If you were at a school in October, and you were also there in February, they consider you a student at that school. So they use your test score to determine that school's grade. If you were in our district from October to February, they consider you for our district grade. And basically, there's a different formula if you are in elementary, middle, high school, or what is called a combination school, like Lincoln Park is 6 through 12, and then a K8 is a combination school, which is K through 8. I also want to add, private schools do not get grades. Private schools, although they get public dollars, parents can take a voucher and use that to go to a private school. Private schools do not have graduation requirements, they don't have to take tests to graduate, they get their diplomas, they don't have the same rigors and standards that our schools do with regards to the hoops they have to jump through. In addition, they do not get grades. Charter schools do get grades. Just want to make that distinction, because public dollars do now go to private schools for the first time. So here are our schools, and I want to point out, Fair Lawn did a great job. They moved forward, they even got a stronger A. Lakewood Park, give it up for Kathy Melrose. Earned a B. Morningside is projected once again, principal there. Valerie Forman has done an amazing job, earned an even stronger A. And I'm truly proud of Latonya at Parkway, two consecutive As. I'm also, Latonya, great job. And that school is only a few years removed from earning a D. And when she arrived at that school, she completely transformed the school, the culture. You know, if you look at their climate surveys, you know, you can hold people accountable and also have a strong culture. And that's what we're, I really try to be about in St. Lucie County Public Schools. Also, Village Green went from a C to a V. Ayesha Boria, is Ayesha here? Ayesha, great, wonderful. Just fantastic, super proud of, and I also want to add too, almost every single one of our schools, almost every single one of our schools improved in their number of points that they earned. They just didn't earn enough points to get the next grade. So almost every one of our principals should be proud, even if they didn't improve a letter grade, they still improved in the percentage of points that they earned. This is where I'm super proud. So Dan McCarty, although if I were a betting man, they are right there to earn a B, and I think they're going to pull it off. And that would be, Ms. Stubbs, where are you? Is she here? Okay, we'll tell her I did a shout-out. Okay? All right. She has done a marvelous job, has turned that school around. Ms. Bobo, C to a B. Bobo has turned Forest Grove around. What a wonderful job she has done. And Southport Middle School, Bree, is Bree here? Nope? Okay, so Bree, that is an A-rated school, super proud of those principals. By the way, some people are on vacation, just going to throw that out there. So, I wanted to jump also to high schools. Almost every one of our high schools improved. I cannot tell you how proud I am, though, of Dave Alfonso. Is Dave here? Dave's not here? Okay, that's okay. Everybody I'm shouting out today are not here. But David, that is the first B rating that Fort Pierce Westwood has ever had. That would be the first time they've ever been rated a B. And Port St. Lucie High School had huge improvements, and they are right on the cusp of being an A. Fort Pierce Central is right on the cusp. By the way, on the far right, where it says percentage of points, the percentage of points you need to be an A is 63.5%. That's what you need. So those schools are so close, and another reason we put such an emphasis on our high school math, because our high school math was kind of holding us back a little bit with regards to our performance of our high schools. This is where I'm the most proud. These schools, Alapata Flats earning an A, that's what we project them to have, an unbelievable year for Anna. Lincoln Park, Michelle maintaining that and building on her A to even stronger heights. Mosaic, Jean Zimba, the virtual learning environment, they're crushing it there. Northport, Glenn Ruste with a B from a C. Oakhamic, Jackie Lee, my daughter taught math, by the way, the lowest 25% did very well, did very well at Oakhamic, super proud. And Palm Point, great way for Kathy to go out. And then Sam Gaines, the second A in that school's history. Keith Davis as the leader of that school. And I've said this before, Dr. Gaines, a few years ago, said that he was embarrassed that his name was attached to that school, and for the second year in a row, that school's an A. So congratulations, Keith. And then Joe Lazo, St. Lucie West K8, earning what we project to be an A for them. And then Westgate, another A, and congratulations. And Ms. Ingersoll's in Australia, but that's a wonderful job for those schools. So projected A ratings, we've got a number of our schools that are projected to be As. The stars indicate that they were a B or lower before earning that this year. And then projected increasing a letter grade, these are the schools that we think have improved to either an A or a B. Remember, you know, we didn't have any D or F schools last year, we will not have any D or F schools this year. And Fort Pierce Westwood, that is a little bit of history there. And with their trajectory, they're in striking distance of an A. I mean, they could pull that off. So can't believe how far they've come, and what a great way to open the new high school as well in January. So some historic grade increase accomplishments, I wanted to add, since 2011, these schools have not earned an A. Alapata Flats in Southport. So it's been 14 years since those schools were A-rated. 2019 with St. Lucie West K8, first B ever is Fort Pierce Westwood. Lakewood Park, it's been 15 years since that school was a B. And then it's been six years since Forest Grove, Northport, Camick, Village Green, and, oh, I was about to say study schools? Oh my gosh. Village Green Environmental Studies School. So, this is our grade breakdown. And I provide it for the last 10 years, so you can see context of where we've been. It's important to see where the district has been, because sometimes we forget, when, I always say, it's not a bad thing, when you're part of a successful organization that wasn't as successful, you kind of forget how things used to be. And we're kind of, it's like, what have you done for me lately? You live in the moment, it's like in, you know, professional sports, you know, one year you're winning the Super Bowl, the next year, you know, you have a losing season, and the coach is fired. We've come a long way. This district has truly come a long way. In 2016, we had nine D and F schools. Nine. That's, you know, a fourth of your schools. This year, we're projected, you know, we've had a distribution from 2023 to 2025, where we had six As, we've almost doubled that number for our public schools. We've increased the number of B-rated schools. And actually, if you look at 2023, we had 16 C schools and three D schools, and now we only have eight C schools. And I'm going to tell you, all eight of those C schools are right on the cusp of earning a B. I mean, they're right there. And by the way, great things are happening in all of those schools. So I'm tremendously proud of the work that we're doing. In addition, I'm also proud to say, legacy high is going to open up next year, and the number of students that we've been able to re-enroll from our charter schools and our private schools and home schools have been in the hundreds. So, you know, we are, we have turned a corner with regards to what the public thinks about St. Lucie Public Schools. And I'm so proud of the work that our folks have done that are behind me, because they're the ones doing the work. So, the school district's been rated a C six times. And all of those times the district's earned a C were prior to 2016. And then the school district's been rated a B 14 times. So we're going to get into our district grade projection. Last year, I'd like to add, I did share a district grade projection with the board, and out of a 1,200-point scale, it's over 1,200 points, we missed it by two points. That's how close our prediction was, okay? So we're very accurate, and actually, the reason it was two points off, we actually fixed that problem. fixed that problem.
[laughter]
I hope. So, and the principals were aware of this. You know, our goal is to continue our ascent as a district and continue the reputation of the district, that we are a first-class district, that we're a destination district. So last year, we earned 736 points. And I'll orient you here real quick. This is how the state publishes your school and district grades. So you have, this is your percentage of students that are proficient in third grade, and this is all of your students, grades three through 10, 50% proficient, 48 in math, 57 in science, 66 in social studies. Then we get into learning gains. The state wants to see, they set a bar of what percentage of your students make a learning gain. And there's different, there's different definitions for it, but just think about, I always say, a year's growth in a year's time. You know, if you're in sixth grade, by the end of the year, have you grown enough to be in seventh grade on, they look at your points on the next exam, did you grow a grade, so to speak? Lowest 25%, the state wants to see, how are you working with your lowest-level students? And actually, the bar for those students is higher because they don't expect you to make a year's growth in a year's time. They want you to make like a year and a half to two years of growth in a year's time because you'll never catch up to the other students if you're just growing at the same rate other students are. Do you follow me? So if you're growing at the same rate as a proficient student and you're in the lowest level of reader, you'll never catch them over time. So they actually set the bar really high. So as you can see, in the lowest 25%, 55% of our students made learning gains, 57 in math. Acceleration, I kind of defined that already, that's middle school students passing a high school exam. College and career, those are our graduates that have passed a workforce development course or a college class test. And graduation rate, those are the students that met the graduation requirements. We earned 61% of the points last year. Last year, for the first time, they added third grade as its own cell. They used to not do that, okay? So when you add third grade for a district like ours, and I say our district is, we have a lot of socioeconomic challenges that I can't, I'm not going to argue, it's directly tied to test scores, and you also have kindergarten readiness is a challenge for districts like ours. So that is a disadvantage to have third grade as its own cell. They also raised the bar. You used to have to earn 62% of the points to be an A. They raised it to 64. So we had a little bit of a bar, a hurdle to get over. So we had to, we got to get 26 points across 12 cells in order to get to 762 points. That's, that's the number of points we need. That is our goal to be an A. All right, just want to make sure the board understands. So we need 26 points to get to 762. That's what, that's what we need to earn an A rating. So I'm going to go ahead and populate this, and that's what we got. So we earned 775 points, which is not even close. We needed 762 to be projected to be an A. We earned 775, which would give us our first A rating in the history of the district. Now, first of all, I want to say, school grades, school grades are irrelevant when it comes to what's happening in a school. Because a school can be rated, I've been part of DNF schools, and there's a lot of love and compassion and great things that are happening in those schools. And when you're labeled a grade, it is devastating, especially when you put your blood, sweat, tears, you know, you're supporting kids, and it's just a bunch of numbers, and they don't look at the circumstances that the children have when they walk in your building. On the flip side of it, the grade is critically important to our district. It's critically important for our communities because it's directly tied to property value. It's directly tied to economic development. Whenever you have industry, you're working with the chamber, Ms. Aaronson, or you're working with Economic Development Council, you know, we've got to be able to sell our community to the industries and businesses that want to come and relocate and invest in St. Lucie County. So this is a real game changer for us in the sense that it's never happened in our district, and since I've been here, we are surrounded, not necessarily to the west, Okeechobee has significant challenges, but we're surrounded by very affluent districts. And that's just a fact, from Palm Beach to Martin to Indian River. This, this is a huge, huge game changer for us as a district, as a community, and also whenever, as I'm going out as superintendent, and I'm speaking on behalf of the board, I cannot tell you what, what it means with your leadership and you as a school board. We cannot be successful without a supportive board. And your private conversations with me, your expectations, you know, what you want as a board, I've always tried, I don't overtly, you know, call a board member out, hey, this is for you, or, you know, Ms. Holly, this is what we talked about. But I do listen. I do listen, and I try to make sure that what we do as a system reflects your expectations for what you want from your school district. And I can't tell you how proud I am of everybody in the system. This is not about you, or me, or the principals, or the teachers, or the bus drivers, or food service. It's about all of us because we all have skin in the game. Everybody makes a difference with the kids. They truly do, and we have compassionate people. And this is not possible without everybody working together. Mr. Freeland's here, I have, you know, we disagree privately all the time, but I can tell you, when he calls, I pick up the phone. And, and, you know, all of our folks, those relationships are really important to have, and, you know, you can disagree without being disagreeable. And it's the same thing with my relationship with the board members. I appreciate you because your leadership has made this possible, and I can't tell you how, you know, I just visited a superintendent's conference, a couple of board members were there, Dr. Mills was there, Ms. Holly was here at FSBA, and I hear stories from superintendents about their, you know, their board, or their board members, and the concept of working as a team and working together and those kind of things. And I am in, I am in heaven right now because of the situation that I'm able to work in. You know, you've got my commitment, I'll end my career here, if you'll let me, but I'm just saying, I really, really enjoy working with each and every one of you. So mostly though, it's the people in the buildings. The principals are the lifeblood of the district. You know, the principals have to believe in my leadership, you know, I do listen, you know, but also what I've tried to communicate to them is you have selfless leaders and you have selfish leaders. You know, what is a selfless leader? You have to look at the organization. And sometimes as principals, what do we look at? Just our school. I've been a principal. I know what that's like. I just want what's in it for me because I care about Colonial High, or I care about Boynton Beach High, or Palm Beach Gardens High, or wherever it is. But, but getting everybody to understand that we work together as a team, as a system, and the only way we can accomplish great things is that we work as part of an organization and that we want what's best for all of us collectively. And our principals are the lifeblood of that, and I can't give enough gratitude because you guys have done a great job. You really have. And I, and I mean that. I wouldn't say it if I didn't mean it. Come on. Okay. All right. So this is my commitment, and I'm giving them a preview of my message on the 24th because what I'm going to talk about on the 24th is really, that's going to be our, our leadership kickoff, is as a principal, you know, what are you about? How do you communicate your expectations? How do you make sure, you know, what does accountability look like? I think that we've got to do a better job of, you know, how do we hold people accountable but do it constructively and not destructively? And we, you know, we're going to continue to train and work with our teams to do that. We also have to make sure that all of our decisions are based on children and not adults. And I can't tell you, we fall into that trap. We fall into a trap of friendship. We fall into a trap of, you know, I don't want to deal with this politically. We fall into the trap of, you know, whatever it may be, we have, at the school level, we have to make decisions that are in the best interest of kids. And, and I believe that, and I'll make those decisions in every recommendation I give to the board, they're thoughtful. I don't do anything just because I want to or I feel like it. I take a lot of time and deliberation before I make any recommendation to the board because ultimately, the board has to make the decision. I'm only making a recommendation, and I respect all of you, and I want to make sure that you feel comfortable with anything I'm going to recommend. Hiring is so important. You know, we've had conversations about hiring and hiring externally versus hiring internally. I do think we're, we've got to a point now where I always want to hire the best people. And wherever they come from, if they're coming from outside, and if I find them, I'm going to try to hire them. But on the inside, we have to give our people internally the tools that if they're not being chosen, then why aren't they being chosen? And what can we do to make sure the next time around, they get chosen? And I think this year was a direct result, the last hiring period, we hired some folks from the outside. We went back, we supported our people, and guess what? This year, we had a number of our own hired-to-be principals, and I'm really proud of them. Resources, July 29th, we're going to talk about the deployment of our resources and really looking at what the future of St. Lucie Public Schools looks like in a changing environment. And all of these are about creating the conditions for success, serving the public good, and making sure that we're the number one destination for families. Because if we stand pat, in the current environment, there are 61 districts that are underwater in student enrollment, and they've lost millions of dollars, 61 out of 67. Six districts in the state of Florida are growing their enrollment in our public schools. We are one of those six. With what's happening now in the state and families having choice, and I believe in choice, I'm all for choice, but I believe you have to make sure that you're the number one, number one option. And the only way we can be the number one option is to invest and pivot and make some changes that I think are necessary for the next 20 years. And ultimately, it goes back to what's good for kids. We have to remember, what we do is what's in the best interest for kids, and those will be my recommendations moving forward. So commitment to continued excellence. We're on a pathway right now where we can earn an A and sustain it. We've reached that point, and I really believe that because we've got the right, the right people in leadership, and we've got the right folks in our school buildings. So I'm proposing goals, and these, by the way, all of these are my input, informally and formally, that I've had with each of you throughout the year. And you and I talk casually, sometimes formally, you know, we meet with, we always meet with Mrs. Richardson right before the agenda comes out, and, you know, I talk to each of you, and I try to hear what your interests are, what, what your priorities are. These goals are based on, on my conversations with you. And we'll have a few weeks privately between now and July 8th, if we want to tweak them, adjust them, you know, we, you know, we can talk, but this is the first time that some of you are seeing them, or you're seeing them, period. So goal one is really about continued success. And I populated the first two, but sorry about that. So what I want to do this year is continue to improve. You know, we have not reached our ceiling in the core. I want to continue to improve in math, reading, science, social studies. Like, like I want our success to be on steroids at this point. Like, we are going to continue to move, we're going to be, continue to be locked in and focused, and I think that we can have a sustainable, sustainable run of success where we can continue to reach higher ceilings in proficiency. And my goal is really to match and exceed the state. The St. Lucie Public Schools has never come close to state proficiency levels. We're right there, and my goal is to match or exceed, and I think we're on the trajectory to do that. Goal two I'm proposing is a phased implementation of our classrooms to careers. We've workshop this with the board, and that's really about adding workforce development components in the elementary and middle school levels, so we create awareness in elementary and explorations in middle, and then experience in high school. Right now, our current technical education and workforce development's been really kind of focused on, you know, the high school level. We want to move that down and add also what is called an eighth-grade experience, where eighth-grade students come to a central location, and we bring in a lot of local businesses. And really, it's about the businesses, you know, how can I sell a student to take these kind of classes that I need them to take in order to come and work in my business locally? And it's really about working with our local businesses and getting them also to have skin in the game, getting them into our schools to assist us with the instruction of students, experiences for students, and that's going to be kind of a phased implementation. We went to Kentucky, a team where we kind of saw this realized, but it was a 10-year, 10-year process. And we really are going to be implementing this over time because I want this to be the number one district for workforce development. Right now, on metrics, we're a top 10 district, but I want us to be number one. And also, I want us to be able to bring industry into St. Lucie Public Schools based on what we have to offer in our schools and in our system. Goal number three, we cannot just invest in new communities. We cannot just invest in new communities. We had a huge investment in the Fort Pierce community with rebuilding Westwood, and we need to make sure that children in some of our oldest campuses have opportunities to be in new schools, new environments, and new opportunities for children, and not just for the students that are in our schools now, but I'm talking about the young brothers and young sisters of those students, and eventually, the children of those students. We have to reinvest, and we've got things we're going to be presenting to the board, some ideas for the board to consider. Remember, these are not plans etched in stone. You know, we've got folks in the community that are out, you know, I went and talked to faculties, and that creates misinformation. But what I wanted to make sure is whenever I go out and talk to a faculty, is if your school comes up, I want you to hear it from the superintendent and not hear it on the news. It's, it's a piece of respect, and I told them, watch the July 29th board workshop or come because we're going to talk about some different ideas and thoughts about opportunities for kids. And that's what's really, this is really going to be about. And rejuvenating schools in the green zone because we have to make sure we make a commitment across all of the district. And really, the number one focus for me right now is what we're going to do in the green zone to provide opportunities for kids. Goal number four is mental health. Every year, we have issues with, with, with children that have mental health issues. This has been a priority, it's part of our referendum, but we also need to look at what we're doing with our training opportunities for our teachers, the mental health, the mental health training that our teachers and our staffs go through, and providing more opportunities for professional development to help support our kids that are having mental health issues. But it's not just about the kids. We have a number of our adults in our system because these jobs are so stressful that it's the mental health of our employees and trying to provide opportunities and awareness that there are mental health supports that we have for our own employees that we need to do a better job of getting the word out. And there are certain metrics that, that we're going to be deploying that will help me measure this a little bit better, that I'll be sharing the board in the coming months. But these, these are the four goals that I'm proposing for '25, '26, and once again, they're a reflection of the various conversations I've had with you, and I plan on submitting them on July 8th, but they're all subject to change. If any of you have any conversations with me, that we can have a public conversation on July 8th, even at that meeting, or in private, prior to voting on them. So that I conclude with, and thank you once again for being the best board in the state of Florida. So thank you, and I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Prince, for your work and, and your leadership, and as well as the principals and the, and the cabinet, and just everyone, the teachers. principals and the, and the cabinet, and just everyone, the teachers, even the union right here. Thank you, David, for your work. All of us together, we're family, we're doing it together. And I'm just amazed myself at the presentation and where we've come from. Two of us on this board has been around for a while, and I have seen tremendous growth. And I thank you for your leadership. And right now, board, I'm going to ask if we would all stand and give these wonderful people a standing ovation, because they deserve it. So we continue the journey, we continue the movement. I'm going to ask from each board member if you have any comments at this time. We're going to begin with Ms. Holly. Ms. Richardson.
Well, I always have something to say. I just really, really want to say thank you so very much for your hard work today. I'm not even going to ask any questions right now. I'm just, we're just going to, to just absorb this atmosphere right now and enjoy it and celebrate. So I just really wanted to say thank you so, 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 so very much for everything that you do, not just for our students, but for each other, your support, how you support each other, because that's important as well. So thank you.
And I think that's where our tremendous growth has come from, we're supporting each other. And we understand that we're all in this together, and we're all working together to make a difference for our children. We're not just saying it, we're doing it. And I'm really excited about St. Lucie County Public Schools and the journey and the direction that we're going in. At this time, I won't hold anybody any longer, because I know you need to get back to your work. So again, we cannot thank you enough. We are adjourned.